Good evening, Members of the Council and Members of the public, and welcome to the annual meeting of Chelmsford City Council. I would like to welcome those new and returning Members to the Council following the recent local elections. Please, would you all remain standing whilst my chaplain says prayers?
Oh God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being the God of love, who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. And we thank you for making each one of us in this room a very special person, a very important citizen of this city. And so we thank you tonight, God, for all your servants, for our mayor, our new mayor, our city staff and our city councillors. We give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take on our behalf and all the people in Chelmsford. We all come to you in this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope and trust in that alone you can hold us together. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and being streamed live on our website. I have also been asked at meetings of the Council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that, in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the Council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green fire exit signs to leave the Civic Centre onto Duke Street via the stairs, which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this table, this chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the War Memorial immediately outside the Civic Centre and, if and when it is safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until it is told, till told that it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please, would you silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst the meeting is taking place? I come to Agenda Item One, which is apologies for absence. I have apologies for absence from councillors' chambers, D Clark, P Clark and John. Are there any more to report?
And councillor Sizmeade.
Councillor Paul Clark has given his apology.
I had mentioned that, thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sizmeade has also given his apologies. Any others? Okay, thank you. I will continue. This is Agenda Item Two, Mayor's announcements. I have some announcements under Agenda Item Two. Firstly, I would like to inform everyone of the sad passing of former councillor and deputy mayor Kathleen Foreman, who was the deputy mayor of Chelmsford during the term of office 2001 to 2002. I would also like to use this occasion to announce the sum raised for my charities on their behalf during my term of office. As you know, the two charities, Farley Hospice and Parkinson's UK, were the original charities chosen by John at the start of this mayoral year and I decided to continue to support them. We have been beset with events out of our control, which meant that many of our events had either to be cancelled or postponed. But despite those setbacks, we have raised an incredible sixteen and a half thousand pounds, which will benefit both charities. But it isn't all about the money. All this year, we have tried to raise the profile of both charities and in these difficult times, publicity for them is a good thing. We also need to remember that times are tough for some people and not everyone is able to give as much as they would have liked. I would like to thank my charities committee for supporting us during our year and also for all the support from other Members present here. It's much appreciated. I would like to invite Deputy Bolts from Farley and Chris Paul from Parkinson's UK to come up. I would now like to invite Jackie Gally to come forward to be presented with her past mayor and mayoress badge. I would now like to invite Judge Grathwick, retired honorary recorder of Chelmsford, to come forward and receive a small gift and allow him the opportunity to say a few words.
Stand up. That's how I normally start my day. It's a pleasure, though, to finish my day with nothing at all like that. I wanted to be here for this meeting in order to thank everyone, but Chelmsford in particular and Chelmsford Council, for giving me, over the last ten years, such a delightful time and giving me the honour of being your honorary recorder. I have to say that when I was first approached to be the recorder of Chelmsford, I was somewhat sceptical. I didn't really know what it would entail. I had, in an earlier life, I never told anybody this here, stood as a social democratic member for Blackheath. Not sure whether that leaves me with that side of the house and hopefully this side of the house. Let's see, I don't say somebody returning, but somebody whose persuasion at that time were over here. But anyway, there we are. The Falklands War came along and we were trounced. But not before I'd experienced, second hand, of course, what in fact you all undergo. I talked to the councillors. Phone calls late at night about impossible things. Individuals who you listen to sympathetically for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes and you can just see that it's going to go on and on and on and they can't see a reason. Endless committee meetings. I thought I was lucky not to have been elected. I also thought I was lucky not to have been elected because from what I could see in the particular area that I was in, they were at each other's throats. I'm bound to say that I was pleasantly surprised when I first came here to see that although, of course, people have different views, they were polite to each other, decent to each other and kind to each other. And during the ten years that I've been your recorder, I never had any reason to take a different view. I don't know about other councils, but really you have all been and your predecessors have all been models in the way, in fact, you carry out your duties and you should congratulate yourselves. For me, it's been a privilege to have come here, to have met you and indeed to have been entertained by many of you. Endless kindness is shown to myself and indeed to the court. It has been an absolute pleasure. I don't know what I brought to the council, probably very little, apart from eating your food, drinking your drink and telling jokes. I'd like to think, and I'm not going to go into it in any great detail because many of you have heard this before, that I managed to establish a bridge between the council and the courts. A bridge that had fallen into disrepair with the passing of the Courts Act. A bridge that was down, the result being you didn't know what was going on in the courts and we didn't know what was going on here. Hopefully, that bridge has been repaired and it's my hope that it will continue, to get it back to what it always was. It can't get back to what it really always was because you, the council, in the olden days, were responsible. You, in fact, provided the buildings for the courts. Oh, that you could do that now, rather than what we have to put up with, but your budgets wouldn't stretch to that. But I hope, and I address everybody here, that you all will take the opportunity to continue, to go to the courts, see what's being done in your name, report back to each other, because it's only in that way that people know what's been done on their behalf. I could go on in relation to that side of things for hours. In fact, Catherine asked me how long I was going to be. I think someone was doing a sweepstake. I said to her, judges can speak for an hour, two hours. How long do you want? Couple of minutes will do, she said. So fair enough. I'm going to leave you, really, with two things. One, a joke, because I always tell jokes. It's always difficult to think of what kind of joke you can tell to a council made up of older people and Members of the public who are all roughly the same age as the council. So I'm going to tell you my daughter's favourite joke. It was a fancy dress party. It was a children's fancy dress party. There was a knock on the door and the host went to the door. And standing there was a man completely naked and on his back there was a woman completely naked. The man said, "This is a fancy dress party. What have you come as?" And the man said, "A snail." The man said, "Who's that on your back?" He said, "Michelle." There we are. I leave you in good humour. I leave you with my thanks. It's been a privilege. I hope that my successor, if there is a successor, will have as lovely a time as I've had with your company. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Judge Grathwick. That was lovely. I now move on to Agenda Item Three, which is the election of mayor for 2023/24. May I have nominations for the office of mayor of the city of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate councillor Mascot and I believe it's seconded by councillor Thorpaps.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? I therefore call upon councillor Robinson to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm very proud to nominate my friend Linda Mascot as mayor for the coming civic year. I first met councillor Mascot fourteen years ago at a community event in Molsham Lodge. Linda, if I can do that, say that, is one of those people who makes things happen in her community. She's been organising all sorts of things over many years in Tyle Kill and further afield. She's organised the delivery of your Chronicle, which doesn't come through so many doors anymore. She's done so much in the, in the community and I was extremely proud to be part of her journey into local politics as well. It was too often people like councillor Mascot don't think that this is a place for them and I encouraged her to think that it was. And she got elected in 2011. But she and many of her colleagues here have proved the value of having a diverse range of voices on this council and I think it's the better for it. This council is better because of people like Linda and others who give so much to their community and who might not have considered standing for election. And I know that she will make an excellent first citizen of the city of Chelmsford for the next twelve months and I'm absolutely delighted to propose her as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. I now call upon councillor Thorpaps to second the nomination.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my great honour to second the nomination of councillor Mascot to be the next mayor of Chelmsford. Councillor Mascot has, of course, already undertaken something of an apprenticeship for this role, having served for two years as deputy mayor. And I have no doubt that she will serve her time in office with the same generosity of spirit, kindness and indeed inclusivity that she showed whilst she was deputy mayor. I'm certain that she'll be a great ambassador for Chelmsford through the many civic events that are inevitably already filling up her diary in the months ahead. So I'd like to wish councillor Mascot the best of luck in the role and I'm very pleased to second this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thorpaps. There being no other nominations, is the nomination of councillor Linda Mascot agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I therefore declare councillor Linda Mascot elected as mayor of city of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year. Congratulations. The family are in. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the deputy mayor is elected by the council, rather than it being purely a mayor's appointment, I have great pleasure in nominating councillor Jude Deakin as deputy mayor for the following year. Have I a seconder?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? In that case, is the nomination of councillor Jude Deakin agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I therefore declare councillor Jude Deakin elected deputy mayor of the city of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year. Please be seated. As part of Agenda Item Four, I shall now read and sign the declaration of acceptance of office. I, Linda Mascot, having been elected to the office of mayor of the city of Chelmsford, declare that I take office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of Members of Chelmsford City Council. I shall now ask the deputy mayor to read and sign her declaration of acceptance of office.
I, Jude Deakin, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor of the city of Chelmsford, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of Members of Chelmsford City Council.
We now come to Agenda Item Five. I'd like to ask the retiring mayor's consort to invest the new mayor's consort with his badge of office. The new mayor's consort will in turn present Keith Dobson with his past mayor's consort badge. I now ask the retiring deputy mayoress to invest the new deputy mayoress with her badge of office. The retiring deputy mayoress will also be presented with her badge of office.
I am deeply humbled, honoured and proud to stand here as the newly elected mayor of my home city of Chelmsford. Thank you to my fellow councillors for your belief and trust in me. I'm sincerely grateful. I commit to serve the people of Chelmsford to the best of my ability with enthusiasm, compassion and devotion. Thank you.
We now come to Agenda Item Seven and I invite councillor Whitehead to propose the vote of thanks to the retiring mayor for her past service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's always a privilege to call first and say, Madam Mayor, to you. So, good. And it's my privilege to give the vote of thanks to the retiring mayor of Chelmsford, councillor Sue Dobson, and also to show, assuming I can get the technology to work, some of the highlights of her years as our mayor. However, as you know, this has been a year in which we've had two mayors, following the sad and unexpected death of councillor John Gally halfway through the mayoral year. Now, tribute has already been paid to John at a civic service and so from that point of view, I shan't spend more than I need to on that time. But it does show, I think, the continuity that we move from one to the other without a hitch and it does show, too, the way that civic life works to those who, as the judge was saying, really, sometimes it's a bit of a mystery to people, but yeah. So I've got a series of photographs, which councillor Dobson features in, of course, both as mayor and as deputy mayor. And we need to thank her for stepping in, I think. It is a very difficult thing to suddenly be thrown into that in what is, we know, a demanding role. And also to thank her husband, because he gave up quite a lot of time, extra time that he probably wasn't entirely prepared for, but nonetheless. So the mayor is normally appointed at full council, as we've seen this evening. But they usually have a month or so to prepare for the ceremony. But of course, in this case, there was no preparation and the effect it has, as I think you will know on family life, is one of these things that you need to sort of get ready for and arrange your holidays and all sorts of things, really. But nonetheless, councillor Dobson took this role seamlessly and both the council and our residents should be hugely grateful for this. Word two for councillor Bob Massey, because he volunteered to take on the role of deputy mayor at short notice. mayor at short notice and was able to add his experience as a previous mayor to assist councillor Dobson if necessary, which it wasn't very often, I'm sure. But nonetheless, let's come to the year itself, and what a year it was, because apart from the events that we've just gone through, including the death of our beloved Queen, proclamation of a new king and the coronation at Westminster Abbey, all of those in one year in Chelmsford, it was marked for the first time. Well, sorry, I remember the last coronation, but you're all too young to know that, so that's okay. But the mayor, of course, is at the heart of these things and supported by the leader of the council, councillors generally, the chief executive and the staff, and it all went off very well. Now, that takes me to the montage of photographs put together by the mayor's secretary, Catherine Ealy, who should always get a mention because it is extremely difficult to be the mayor's secretary, not because of the faults of the mayors, but because there are so many things to be done. But she's done a wonderful job, and I'd like to thank her particularly for the huge workload that fall on her shoulders during this unique year. Now, the pictures show the usual civic events, but of course there are also ones that relate to the royal family, but they had a huge workload of, I think, 300 or so events to go to, which is a huge number over the period. But I've no doubt that from our point of view, the council would wish to give councillor Dobson a huge thank you for her time both as deputy mayor and mayor of Chelmsford during the past 12 months. Thank you. Now, if we can get the technology to work, we will see. Now, of course, we've got two of certain things really tonight, which is unusual, but we doubled the number of trees we planted, really, so that'll keep you all happy over there, and we'll hopefully have our green agenda. But we appointed, as you know, councillor Gally and councillor Dobson in May, and the theme for that year was hope. Now, we had the Jubilee celebrations, and yes, I forgot to mention Jubilee in my commentary, and it was that as well, four things, amazing. But nonetheless, they went to a number of Jubilee celebrations, and here's a selection of photographs, including the cathedral Jubilee service and the beacon lighting in Oakland's Park. You can't see much of a beacon, I have to say, on there, but nonetheless, it was well thought. And there were more, and again, the mayor at that time, deputy mayor as well, were all very, very busy. Now, there's the usual sort of events, I won't say bread and butter events, because that downplays them, but the normal events which take place, which is appreciated by all the residents, really. And so there's a variety of ones here. We've got the mini games with the deputy mayor riding a horse, and the new one's got something to look forward to, isn't it? Great battle charity races, sports experience for children with disabilities, Ride London, professional ladies event, and the under 19 Chelmsford City Football Celebration, amongst others. And of course, there are charity events going on at the same time, which are mentioned there, open gardens and so on. Sun seemed to be shining all the time as well, which was particularly good. And then maybe there's play in the park, a great thing that goes on in Chelmsford, and you'll see there the city council, which of course runs it, and each session has a variety of activities, and the mayor enjoyed leading the Chelmsford carnival with a suitable mobility scooter, dressed up, promoting accessibility. The mayor's scissors have been busy, of course, during the year, with the mayor and deputy attending a variety of openings, restaurants in the city, opening of the new Ambience Live, Well Gardens, Maud May Primary School, and the celebration launch of Chelma Waterside. And of course, acting as an ambassador, the mayor is always keen to present the council to those outside the city. So here you can see the mayor and mayors attend the High Sheriff's Garden Party, Hurley King and Queen's Harvest Festival at the Guildhall, the Brochford Garden Party, and the deputies were privileged to attend the Maldon Civic Reception. And of course, we then come to the point that we were discussing earlier, which is the sad death of the Queen, and that involved a lot of events, including the mayor signing the book and letters of condolence, laying floral tributes, attending gun salutes at the Colchester Garthum, representing Chelmsford, the Essex Proclamation of the New King and reading the Chelmsford Proclamation. Little did anyone know that this would be the last public engagement properly of John Gally. And so here we see the party on the steps there, there's quite a lot of photos and lots of jolly good photos at that time. But we had to move on, and we've got the town twinning visit from the Bacnang area, which visited to continue the links between Chelmsford and Bacnang. There was a tree planting, another tree, visits to Chelmsford Cathedral, the Gaia, you remember that giant globe that they had out there? The Riverside Ice and Leisure, finishing the day with a walk to Chelmsford Museum for an evening twinning event. My son assures me he's on television watching this for you, so we'll keep up the thing going. And then, of course, as I say, we had to change, I could say change horses, but that's a bit unfair for councillor Dobson, but nonetheless, John's health deteriorated and passed away, and he was in fact the first mayor for over 100 years to die in service. And then there was a civic funeral, which was incredibly well attended, and then we had a special council meeting here on November 2023. Councillor Dobson was elected as mayor and appointed councillor Bob Shepherd, oh, sorry, councillor Bob Massey as a deputy, and for the remaining time continued with the theme of hope. And of course, there's Remembrance Sunday, another one of those events that is of great importance in the city, and we were also flying the Commonwealth Flag of Peace event as well. So that was always a highlight of most mayors' year, and this was a slightly different one. But at the same time, we were asked to join the other 75 cities in the UK to come together to celebrate the 10th anniversary as a signing of the Charter of the Commonwealth by late Queen Elizabeth and to fly the Commonwealth of Nations flag of peace. December is always a busier month for the majority, and last year was no exception, attending 35 engagements ranging from carol services, Christmas tree festivals, decipity events and visits to schools, and you again see them illustrated there. I'm not quite sure how many carol concerts mayors go to, but I know it's a lot from watching their celebrations. And of course, they went to local drama groups and organisations, showing local talent here. And promoting local democracy by giving talks to organisations, welcoming visitors from Cubs, Guides, Brownies, Schools, youth and adult groups from within the Chelmsford district, not to mention welcoming school exchange students as well. The mayor has attended openings and open days for the city council, including the 3G football pitch, Franklin Fields Nature Reserve, Melbourne Play Area and the Audman Thomas Crampthorn Blue Plaque unveiling. There have been festivals and events as well, the Holocaust Memorial, Hindu festivals, to name just a few, and again, you'll see them on there. Oh, we're back to trees again, sorry. The mayor's been busy planting trees and crotus bulbs during the year, and here we have ones planted in, well, my area of South Hanningfield, Highlands Park as part of Tree of Tree, the Green Canopy Initiative and in Boreham in memory of John. Towards the end of the mayoral year, of course, we have the community evening at Highlands House, an opportunity to show our appreciation to all the local volunteers, the unsung heroes, really, of Chelmsford, and councillors are asked to nominate individuals to go over, sorry, who go over and above the call of duty outside of their ordinary work. Truly memorable evening. And we come on to the coronation, and all the events there are fairly recent, so we know them really, but again, Chelmsford played its part, and the mayor, of course, has to be right at the front of that part to make sure that everything went well, which it did. So there was a busy year, right until the last few days, really. The mayor and the consort had the honour of attending the King's First Garden Party at Buckingham Palace. She's presented awards to staff for long service for 20, 30 and 40 years. It was on the judging panel for CVS Awards, and there were various other events, including the unveiling of the John Gally Memorial Ground in Boreham, which you see. The deputies have attended parlor visits, a new dementia care activities centre, and only two days ago, the launch of the Accessible Skills Kitchen. As you heard earlier, fundraising has taken place for Farley and for Parkinson's UK, and I won't repeat that, but I know it's greatly valued by all the charities, and we will see. There used to be records for this of who could achieve the most, really, but as was said earlier, really, because of all the other events that took place, it wasn't quite as easy, and I know from the previous mayor had similar problems and all those visits that we'd forgotten almost, really, of online meetings and never want to keep our fingers crossed, that we never have them again. But nonetheless, we still raise a lot of money. So, here are the two mayors and their consorts, and I hope all of this has given you, sorry, it's a bit long, but there was a lot happening this year, so I did sort of have a little extras to say, but you've seen now what the mayor does, what deputy mayor does, and we wish the new mayor and the deputy mayor well, and look forward to seeing an even better presentation next year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Puley will second the vote of thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope you'll allow me to stay seated, and thank you, everyone, for your understanding. You don't want me falling over in the middle of this, do you? I'm pleased with the opportunity to do this. When we were sorting out who was going to second, the one thing that stuck in my mind was that I was told to keep it short, which is a very dangerous thing to say to me, as some of you know, but I'll do my best. I'll start off by saying that I'm jealous about the garden party. In the time of Covid, I and the chairman of Helping Hands Essex, which was alive and well in those days, were invited to one of the garden parties, and we were all set to go, and she had hired her top, no, no, not her top hat, that's the wrong way around. So I rather think that opportunity may have passed me by now, but it's good that that was included as a recognition of the work that's been going on. I think the main thing that comes across to me, though, is the value of the mayor in being very, very broadly based geographically within the borough, the type of charities visited during the borough. We're finding in all of our activities that the work of charities and voluntary organisations is becoming more and more important, and the role of the mayor is very definitely to be part of accepting that, reflecting that gratitude that we have to them all. So it looks a very lively and busy schedule, well done. But I just wanted to say two things about her role within the council, rather than her role as mayor, because it wasn't mentioned by Roy, and it deserves a mention, that she continued with a number of functions during her time as deputy mayor, and indeed, when I first met her, this was before her term of office, she joined the Working Party for Health and Wellbeing, and I was going along as the chair of the policy board and just seeing what we were trying to do with the draft policy as it was at that stage. And she was enormously constructive about that, introducing one or two totally new things into the health and wellbeing strategy for consideration, which certainly stuck and deserved to be mentioned. Well, I won't dwell on the horse, that was the first time I heard her talking about riding, but she did it in exactly the right way, saying what was needed rather than dwelling on it unnecessarily. And the other thing which sticks in my mind is her continuing role on the planning committee, where she is very, very thoughtful, balanced, confident in what she says and well trained in what she says through the things which we all go through. So I was surprised when I saw her continued activity within the council to the extent that it was, and I was pleased to see that, a contribution that she made in that sense as well. So there we are. I think riding a horse is a good memory on that selection of slides. On the planning committee, I will say that she does bring it up from time to time to make sure that there is a path which is designated as there for riding, and quite right too. And so I balance that by saying, well, what about wheelchair users? So I get my say in too. But anyway, I'm delighted to second the vote of thanks, and thank you, Sue, for all your hard work.
Thank you, councillor Puley. It is now my pleasure to present the past mayor's badge to retiring mayor. Will councillor Dobson please join me? All right, well, thank you councillor Whitehead and councillor Puley for those lovely words. That's really appreciated, but I shall remember that for a long time to come. Well, what a year that was. First of all, I would like to offer my congratulations to councillor Mascot and her deputy councillor Deakin, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I hope you have a wonderful year. I'm very honoured and privileged to have had this opportunity to become mayor of this city, albeit unexpected, and we have many very special memories on which no doubt we will reflect in the coming months. We have had an amazing time. We've carried out 331 engagements. Unfortunately, 22 were having to be either cancelled or postponed for various reasons. As councillor Whitehead said, it has been a most unusual year. We have had the Platinum Jubilee, the death of the monarch, the proclamation, a civic funeral, the Commonwealth Declaration and the coronation, all in one year, apart from the normal civic events. All these events are one-offs, and it has to be said that the mayralty rulebook had several of its pages dusted off for the first time this year. The fact that this council was able to pull together these unique events, especially the death of the Queen and the need for a civic funeral, reflects the wealth of knowledge and professionalism that the mayralty team have here. We are very lucky in this council to have people whom this year have worked incredibly hard in sometimes very emotional circumstances, and I would like to personally thank firstly our driver and mace bearer John and his team of drivers for their support and wonderful humour during the year. Secondly, I know she'll be embarrassed here, but I want to mention Catherine. Her ability to organise our lives along with the various events that have taken place this year is phenomenal. It has been a very unusual, busy and often emotional year, and I am very proud to have had the privilege of working with her. So Catherine, thank you. I would also like to thank my chaplain, Reverend Terry Brown, for his support and good humour during our year, and also to thank my husband Keith for supporting me, and I know he has enjoyed this year too. Lastly, but definitely not least, I want to thank councillor Bob Massey and his wife Ally for stepping in as deputies at short notice. I am very grateful for their support, and we have enjoyed their company on many occasions. So Bob, thank you, and I'd like to ask you to come up, please. So Bob, thank you, and I'd like to ask you to come up, please.
Agenda item eight is mayor's announcements. I'm pleased to announce that my chaplain for this year will be youth and community pastor, James Bell of Tarkhill Church. And my chosen charity will be YMCA Essex. My theme for the year ties in with my charity and his bright futures, focusing on supporting young people, particularly from disadvantaged backgrounds, to become confident, successful, and happy adults. Then we move on to agenda item nine. So that completes the ceremonial parts of the annual meeting and we now have administrative items of business to conduct. The first is agenda item nine, which is the election of leader to the council and the leader scheme of delegation. I call for nominations for leader of the council for the next four years. Councillor Goldman?
Madam Mayor, I nominate councillor Stephen Robinson as leader of the council for the next four years.
Is that seconded?
I am happy to second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. And there being no other nominations, I declare councillor Robinson elected leader of the council. I now call on him to propose his leader's scheme of delegation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, can I once again congratulate you and look forward to working with you over the 12 months ahead? And four years ago, the Liberal Democrats took on the leadership of the city council. And we'd said at that election that we would work to create a greener, fairer, and more connected Chelmsford. And that's what we did, even though after just six months in the administration, we faced a whole range of unexpected events, to put it mildly. These included a general election, rampant inflation, and of course, a global pandemic, which the cost of living crisis that has flowed over the last year has affected every household, every business, and every single council in the country. With costs out of our control, rising by 11%, but income only rising by 3% or 4%, all councils, whichever party is leading, have been forced, following lack of government support, to make very difficult budget savings. But to make Chelmsford greener, we agreed an action plan to make the city council net zero by 2030. We've reduced carbon emissions, reduced waste, cut energy use and pollution. We've funded infrastructure, we've set aside funding for green initiatives. And to make Chelmsford fairer, we've made real progress on the housing crisis. We convened an all-agencies homelessness forum and worked with charities and others to ensure a joined-up approach and put in the wraparound services that we need to offer every rough sleeper a roof over their heads. And we stuck firmly to the affordable requirement in the local plan and have achieved significant increases in our own affordable house building at various sites across the district. And to make Chelmsford more connected, we've worked with partners on a new cultural strategy to set Chelmsford's direction as an innovative collaborative place. We brought cream fields and many other events to Highlands. We've invested in our theatre, bringing more footfall into the city centre to help other businesses, refreshing a tired but important council asset. We work closely with the police, securing over half a million pounds for safer streets. And we supported over 600 small businesses and supported the Business Improvement District on their plans to enhance the area around the High Street. All of this was set out in our Chelmsford R Plan, which we published in late 2019 and we've been working hard to deliver. And this will be updated for the next four years later this year. There is much still to do and we are ambitious for Chelmsford. The cabinet that I'll nominate under item 10 to lead this work will operate the existing leader scheme of delegation that I'm proposing under this item. The scheme itself is unchanged from the last four years. None of the portfolio holders exercise delegated authority themselves, but only at cabinet meetings. Over the next four years, the Liberal Democrat administration will remain firmly focused on serving the residents of Chelmsford. We hope in this four years for slightly more stable world conditions and maybe even a more stable government that enables us to create a greener, fairer, and more connected Chelmsford. So I move the recommendation, thank you.
We are asked to note the scheme of delegation, so if there are no questions, we'll move on to item 10. The next item is on the arrangements for and appointments to city council and outside bodies. Councillor Robinson, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And you have before you four schedules. Schedule A is to note the political group's composition and their leader and deputy leaders. Schedule B sets out the appointments to the cabinet and opposition spokespeople on executive functions. Schedule C details the proposed size, composition, chair and vice-chair of committees and subcommittees, and Schedule D, which deals with all the other appointments, including those to outside bodies. I move that each of those schedules be approved. And I'm happy to answer any questions that might be, but I would like to say a few explanatory words on the portfolios. At cabinet, I will lead on finance, but my deputy for finance and audit will be councillor Hawkins, who will be doing much of the supporting work. Connected Chelmsford will continue to be led by councillor Marie Goldman. A fairer Chelmsford to be led by councillor Foster to continue our work to use council property to build affordable housing. Councillor Moore will continue her excellent work to create a greener and safer Chelmsford with councillor Ealy as her deputy on community safety. And an active Chelmsford will be led by councillor Dudley, overseeing heritage, leisure, and vital community engagement. The cabinet member for a growing Chelmsford will be councillor Fuller. Ensuring sustainability is embedded into the planning process and our local plan review, which is coming forward, with councillor Simon Goldman continuing as cabinet deputy for the economy and special projects. So I move the recommendations at the end of item 10 and the appointments I set out in schedules A, B, C, and D. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions on the content of the schedules? Are the schedules approved? The final item of business is a report seeking the approval to appoint independent persons and parish representatives to the governance committee, the recommendations of which were approved by the governance committee on the 8th of March. It will be introduced by councillor Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council, for just appointing me as the new chair of the governance committee. And in that capacity, I'd like to move the report with recommendations to appoint independent persons, a minor change to the terms of reference and the reapportment of councillor Peter Jackson. This is clearly very important to us. So I'm grateful to the previous governance committee for doing this work and putting this report together. And I will sit down at that point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Is the recommendation agreed? That concludes this evening's meeting. I declare the meeting closed and invite members and our guests to join us for tea, coffee, and cake, which will be in the Civic Voyage and the Marconi and Crompton Rooms.